New Year, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Stafford County Board of Supervisors' annual meeting for calendar year 2018. The deputy clerk could call the roll, please.
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. I would ask you all to join me and stand for the invocation, which will be read by Supervisor Dudenheffer, and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Supervisor Shelton.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Stafford County, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for your great glory, and for the service of our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Board's Bylaws, Section 1.1, the first order of business is election of the chairman. Once the nominations are complete, the Board will vote in the order in which the nominations were received. A second is not required for any nomination. After the chair is elected, we will take a short recess to change seats, and the new chair will preside over the election of the vice chair and the remainder of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations.
I nominate-
Mr. County Administrator? This seating wouldn't be able to be figured out until after the vice chair?
After the vice chair?
Correct.
Okay.
I nominate Meg Bomke.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
Okay. Nominations are closed. Supervisor Mauer has nominated Supervisor Bomke for the chairman. The Board is now voting on that. So if you would cast your votes.
Tally the votes, please.
Okay. So Supervisor Bomke has been elected as chair of the Board for calendar year 2018. And, Madam Chair, I turn that over to you for the vice chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foley. And I just want to thank my colleagues. I appreciate the confidence that you have in me to help to lead the county, and I look forward to working with all of you. We have a lot of challenges on our plate in 2018 and a lot of great opportunities as well, and I think we're going to have a great year, and I thank you for your support. So with that, I would like to ask for nominations for the vice chairman position.
Madam Chairman?
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Gary Snellings.
Are there other nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
All right. Could everybody please vote on who they would like as vice chairman? Mr. Snellings is the only selection. The vote is in. Gary receives that appointment as vice chairman unanimously. Thank you, and we're going to take a quick three-minute recess, five-minute recess, and realign everything here at the dais. Thank you.
Remember when we all got here to block one?
Yep.
That was nice.
It's the joy of being your neighbor.
So you ready to get started? 2018, new year.
Yeah, it's a good year.
Big year for the county tourism.
It is. It certainly is. We shall see.
Yep, we shall.
What happens.
Did you have a good holiday and everything?
I did. I had a good holiday, yeah. Actually, I just celebrated a birthday.
Oh, you did?
On Friday, yes.
Happy birthday.
It was good. The holiday always coincides with my birthday, which is interesting.
Yeah, yeah. It's good. Did you travel any, or you all?
No, I went to see my uncle. He's in Charlottesville.
Oh, okay.
He's in a facility there, so we visited him.
Oh, okay.
And I thought about it.
Yeah.
So we said, okay, what about you?
Good. We were in Almar County, back in that area. Still got the house. The kids were over.
Okay. You think they're all out of school, though, right?
Yeah, they are.
That's good.
Yeah, it was nice. Everybody was able to come back.
Yeah.
They don't have spouses or significant others at this point, so nothing to keep them from coming home and hanging out the whole day, so that was good.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, we had a good time.
That's good.
Yep.
Was the weather better there, good here?
Um, it wasn't much different. Yeah, I was watching both places, and it's usually a couple of degrees difference there in Charlottesville area.
Oh, that's good.
But I did go up to see my dad, and he stayed in Maine. He was having some health issues, but, oh my gosh, it was negative fifteen in the morning.
Oh, my gosh.
There was a lot of snow on the ground.
When I was younger, I've always been a big snow lover, cold lover.
Oh, is that right?
Well, as I've gotten older, it's changed, but when I was younger, and I used to say, "I'm going to go to college in Maine." It's the fastest I can go north in the continent of the United States.
Right.
It didn't happen.
Yeah. My sister went to school up there.
I mean, it seems really nice, but I wise up.
The summers are wonderful. The winters are just so long, you know? Even if you deal with the cold, they're just long.
I was at one of our offices, one of the times used to work, and I was working to Boston, and his house, when they bought it, was renovated. He didn't even have air conditioning, just because they get a random hot day every once in a while, but they didn't even need air.
That's pretty typical. But when you get into August, there are two weeks that are really bad.
[laughing]
You know, they don't have anything, so.
Yeah.
That's a good question. Let me ask for she.
I'll check that we have all these. We have two numbers that weren't here, but they just seem to be. I'll just pull them from the agenda. Okay, so we can hold a minute to stay. Okay, are we ready? All right, are we ready?
The agenda's waiting here.
That's what that is. I was looking at it going, is that oatmeal? I know. Okay, I need to take some. Okay.
That's a sick.
All right. So I guess we're waiting for them.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I believe that we should go through it kind of from the very beginning, so we're all on the same page. And does anybody have any dates? Yes, Mr. Foley?
Madam Chair, there actually are a couple of other items before number two, and I think that's because they're not numbered, that that might have been confusing, but-
Oh, you're right.
Adoption of the agenda and a recognition.
Okay. All right. First, pardon me for that. First, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chairwoman, I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Cast your vote. Tally the vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the recognition of outgoing Board member, Robert Bob Thomas. Bob, if you could come to the front, please.
So today's a real bittersweet moment with Bob, who's going to be leaving us tomorrow, but we want to go ahead and recognize him, and I have to say that it's been quite the journey. I'm sure you didn't expect this from February of last year. You couldn't have predicted this if you wanted to. But anyway, we are really going to miss your leadership on the Board, and I do have, I'm going to read the proclamation because I would need my cheaters for that. But before I do that, I would just like to say a few words about Bob and who he is as a person, and I want to say that his leadership has been significant. And when I say that, I don't mean just as chair and vice chair. I'm just talking about his leadership for six years when it comes to all the committees that we all sit on. And as we know, a lot of the business that we do gets started in committees, and he's been a very steady hand there. I've also admired Bob because he is his own businessman. He's kind of self-made. He joined the Marine Corps at a very young age and started his own computer business, and, you know, he's done this all on his own. It was never handed to him, and I commend you for that. It's really a great testament to who you are. And then lastly, I'd just like to say, Bob has always had a very steady hand in everything that he's done. I don't know if any of you have ever seen him upset or mad. I always say, you know, "Do you get mad?" I don't, he said, "Oh, I do get mad every once in a while, Meg," but we've never seen it on the Board. And he's kind of like the heart surgeon that you want operating on you. They're doing very detailed work, and he's always very focused, and he takes everything into account before he makes a decision. And he doesn't let personalities get involved, and I really like that about him. So I just want to say, on behalf of the Board, and I know they'll have comments during Board comments, we're truly going to miss you, but we know you're on to greater things in Richmond, and it's been a true pleasure to serve with you. So now a proclamation recognizing and commending Robert Bob Thomas Jr. for outstanding service on the Stafford Board of Supervisors and to the citizens of Stafford County. Whereas Robert Bob Thomas Jr. represented the citizens of the George Washington District since 2012, and whereas during his time on the Board, he was elected by his peers to serve vice chairman in 2013 and chairman in 2016. And whereas Mr. Thomas is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, serving nearly eight years on active duty, he earned his associate's degree in networking from Northern Virginia Community College and a bachelor's degree in computer information systems from Excelsior College. And whereas Mr. Thomas served on the Board's Bylaws Committee, the Community and Economic Development Committee, and the Finance Audit and Budget Committee. And whereas Bob Thomas has been a staunch proponent of the Board's emphasis on fiscal responsibility and reducing the tax burden, and his leadership was integral in helping the county thrive after the nation's financial downturn. During his tenure and under his leadership on the Finance Audit and Budget Committee, the Board eliminated the boat tax, the machinery and tools tax, and kept personal property and real estate taxes low. And whereas Bob Thomas traveled to New York with the county staff to defend the county's bond ratings with the three main bond agencies, helping the county earn the second of its two AAA bond ratings. Thanks to the financial practices endorsed by the Board and Mr. Thomas, the county is well on its way to achieving its third AAA bond rating. And whereas Mr. Thomas is a friend and supporter of small businesses and economic development, helping to co-found Capriccio Software Incorporated, a Stafford County business for which he serves as president and CEO. During his tenure on the Board, Stafford led the state in job growth and multiple new businesses opened. And whereas Mr. Thomas has been a staunch advocate for Stafford County and the region's transportation needs by serving on the Operations Board of the Virginia Railway Express and the Potomac and Rappahannock Transportation Commission. During his time serving these organizations, as well as the Board of Supervisors, hundreds of millions of dollars were invested in transportation infrastructure in the region. The Falmouth intersection was renovated, Route 17 was widened, funding was secured for the creation of the new Courthouse Road interchange off I-95, as well as the widening of Courthouse Road. Hot lanes were added to the interstate, the Ferry Road Route 3 intersection improvement project began, and an extra walking lane will be added to the Chatham Bridge. And whereas Mr. Thomas oversaw the continual investment in the historical resources in his district, supporting the renovation of Shelton's Cottage, the construction of the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail, the revitalization of Old Falmouth, and the county's continued support of George Washington's boyhood home. And whereas Bob Thomas served on the community policy and management team, the Policy Board governing the Children's Services Act, CSA, and has been forward-thinking in innovative ways to meet the needs of children requiring special education services. And whereas Mr. Thomas represented Stafford County on the Board of the Central Rappahannock Regional Library Board, where he helped usher the library into the digital age. And whereas Bob Thomas was a major proponent of a new Stafford High School, reaching across the aisle to the school board to navigate the best and most responsible path forward. And whereas through his time in office, Mr. Thomas has been an active member of the Virginia Association of Counties, graduating from the Certified Supervisors Program in 2013, serving on the Finance Steering Committee and the Budget Committee, and serving as second vice president from 2016 to 17, and is the 2018 president-elect. And whereas prior to serving as supervisor, Mr. Thomas was the chairman of the Stafford Telecommunications Commission and has been integral to helping connect citizens and businesses to the Internet. Under his tenure on the Board, dark fiber was deployed through Stafford County from Washington, D.C. to Richmond. And whereas Bob Thomas is an active member of the community, spending countless hours volunteering at Stafford High School as a band parent and as a member of Spotswood Baptist Church. And whereas Bob Thomas was elected in 2017 to represent the 28th District in the Virginia House of Delegates, where he will continue to serve the citizens of Stafford County and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this the ninth day of January 2018, that it be and hereby does recognize Mr. Robert Bob Thomas Jr. for his service on the Board of Supervisors and to the citizens of Stafford County.
[applause]
So we present you with this proclamation, Bob.
Thank you. You're going to hold it up, and they want to take your picture. Would you like to say a few words? I will keep it brief, because that wasn't. Many of you that know me, I don't like hearing my name that many times in one sentence, but as Meg was reading that proclamation, every time she mentioned a topic, I remembered one of my colleagues or somebody on staff that helped usher that accomplishment through. There's not one thing on there that gets done by yourself, and that's been probably one of the biggest lessons to me here, my colleagues, and welcome to my new colleagues. Mark and I actually served, I think, for about a half hour back in 2012 before he headed to Richmond. So I guess unless a judge wakes up on the wrong side of the bed, we'll be repeating that here this time. So really sorry to miss you, but you've really prepared me for the not-so-fun job ahead, and I think a lot of the lessons that you've shared with me very candidly hopefully will help me continue to serve here. There's a couple of colleagues that I served with that aren't here. Court Sterling was very instrumental in teaching me the finance and budget, and I'm really grateful to him for that. Susan Stimson also was very conservative with the budget, and I learned a lot of those lessons there. And, you know, those two people were very instrumental, and, you know, I only got to serve two years with them, but I think everybody you serve with kind of leaves an impression on you. And then, of course, you know, Laura Sellers just departed. She was very helpful with me on the CPMT. And then Paul Milde, I spoke a lot about him last time, but those four people aren't here today, but they have a lot to do with all these accomplishments you just heard. So the only other thing I'll say is I'm going to be glad to hang that on my wall in Richmond, and I'm already reminding people, and they pretty much know that Bob's that local government guy. So for better or worse, Mark was there, and I'm going to keep taking that torch forward. But for me, before I was elected, I had no idea, absolutely no idea, what the county staff accomplished on a daily basis for everybody. Now, I'm very intimately aware, every time a water main breaks, and we have people out there in two-degree weather, they don't complain. They get the job done. The supervisors get our fire and rescue alerts all the time, and the amount of work that they do, arriving in sometimes five and six minutes, every time I see that, I'm just continually amazed. And then the staff here in this building, really, the Board of Supervisors can set a vision, but we can't do it unless you all fully buy into it. And I know for my six years, every time we've set a priority, our county administrator, you know, Tom, and then, of course, Anthony Romanel, you have always had the staff pull in one direction and really fulfill what the Board was trying to do. So I appreciate it. It's been a great honor representing the people of the George Washington District, and hopefully here real soon, you'll have somebody else in my seat doing that, and I trust the Board will find somebody quickly to fill that seat, and I will be a resource to them as well. But thank you to everybody here, especially my colleagues and staff. Thank you.
Sheriff. And I would just like to say, on behalf of the county and the Board of Supervisors and the citizens, we have this picture for you here. Recognize that place?
That's my boat.
[laughing] And now I'd like to call up the sheriff's office, which would like to recognize you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Bob, myself and Major McAllister, on behalf of the men and women of the Stafford County Sheriff's Office, are here to express our gratitude to you. Sheriff Charles Jett, we wanted to be here, and I was just on the phone with him a little while ago. He's called in a meeting in Richmond, and he wanted to be here, but he is sending his very best to you. But on behalf of all the men and women of the Stafford County Sheriff's Office, we just want to let you know how grateful we are to you for your leadership and for your partnership with us, and for you just showing the priority towards public safety and keeping the community safe, and we're very grateful for that relationship. And this is a very small token of appreciation. There's no way in the world we could ever get you anything that would compare to the work that you've done to help the community and to help public safety and to help Stafford County Government. So God bless you, and thank you very much. And we also have a small token from all of us here, a cup with the Stafford County logo, so when you're drinking your coffee, you can think of us and all the people who care about you and appreciate you. So God bless you.
I know exactly where these are going.
All right. Thank you, sir. God bless you.
Okay. Now we are back to item number two. Thank you. My computer went out. Okay, so the calendar. Mr. Foley, you had mentioned some dates that might be changing.
Madam Chair, I think a couple supervisors had some suggestions they wanted to make as a part of this item. I would leave that back to the Board members. I think some wanted to propose some different dates.
Okay. And I believe that on the June date, the election primary date, that should actually be June 12 instead of June 5. So if everybody can make a note of that.
Are we doing June 12 and June 19? Or are we moving the June 19 meeting as well?
It seems to me that I heard somebody wants to move the July 4 meeting, so it might actually work pretty well to bump both of those, because it'd give you two weeks in between.
I think that makes sense.
All right. Is anybody opposed to that? Okay.
So how does that, would you explain the actual dates we're talking about?
So that would be...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If that would make that... We would... The recommendation, I believe, would be to go from June 5 to June 12, from June 19 to June 26, and from July 3 to July 10.
If you continue that and you move the second one in July to '24, then it finally does mesh up with August 7, so you basically have two weeks if that's already...
There is a second one in July.
Okay. You're right. You're right.
Right.
So that works pretty good.
Okay. And then also, let's talk about the November dates and December. So in November, we have Election Day, and then the 20th, and some colleagues had made a note, in fact, we did it this year, I don't know about previous years, where we had a meeting right before the holidays. I understand the interest of maybe pushing that till, what, November 27?
Yes.
And I guess in November, December kind of work together, so if we move that to November 27, in December, since we have the holiday gathering on the 4th, would we want to meet on a week before? On what would that be? December 11?
I think that's the best. Gets us away from the Christmas holiday.
Okay.
Madam Chair, are we planning on meeting on Election Day?
That's what's proposed right now.
And as I recall, Madam Chair, there was a suggestion that the Board might want to consider moving that, I think, as Ms. Mauer was mentioning.
Since we moved the, excuse me, the 20th to the 27th, if we slid that November 6 one week.
The 13.
Yeah. The only caution I have on that is the VACO conference goes from the November 11 to the November 13. So if, I mean, if everybody plans on coming back on the 12, which I think most of, if you go to the VACO conference, most of the stuff ends on that Monday anyway, if I remember correctly.
Well, although there are some committees that meet...
Yeah, and the actual voting and business meeting is first thing Tuesday.
On that 13th? Okay.
Mr. Cavalier?
It's customary for the Board that when we don't have an election among our members, that we do meet on Election Day, and we've done it several times in the past, so I don't think we...
I don't really see a problem.
We need to move it, because if we move it another week, then we're looking at almost a month between the October and the November meetings, and that's usually a busy time of year.
Mr. Snellings?
We are, in fact, going to have a Board member up for election. Right. Takes Bob's seat, so that's going to be one George Washington will not be represented. I wouldn't think he'd want to be here.
And we also have a small token from all of us here, a cup with the Stafford County logo. So when you're drinking your coffee, you can think of us and all the people who care about you and appreciate you. So God bless you. Thank you, sir. God bless you.
Okay, now we are back to item number two. Thank you. My computer went out. Okay, so the calendar. Mr. Foley, you had mentioned some dates that might be changing.
Madam Chair, I think a couple supervisors had some suggestions they wanted to make as a part of this item. I would leave that back to the board members. I think some wanted to propose some different dates.
Okay. And I believe that on the June date, the election primary date, that should actually be June 12th instead of June 5th. So if everybody can make a note of that.
It seems to me that I heard somebody wants to move the July 4th meeting, so it might actually work pretty well to bump both of those, because it'd give you two weeks in between.
I think that makes sense.
All right. Is anybody opposed to that? Okay.
So how does that, would you explain the actual dates we're talking about?
So that would be... Yes.
The recommendation, I believe, would be to go from June 5th to June 12th, from June 19th to June 26th, and from July 3rd to July 10th.
If you continue that, and you move the second one in July to '24, then it finally does mesh up with August 7th. So you basically have two weeks.
There is a second one in July.
Okay, you're right. You're right. So that works pretty good.
Okay. And then also, let's talk about the November dates and December. So in November, we have Election Day, and then the 20th. And some colleagues had made a note, in fact, we did it this year, I don't know about previous years, where we had a meeting right before the holidays. I understand the interest of maybe pushing that till, what, November 27th?
Yes.
And I guess in November, December kind of work together. So if we move that to November 27th, in December, since we have the holiday gathering on the 4th, would we want to meet on a week before? On what would that be, December 11th?
I think that's the best. Gets us away from the Christmas holiday.
Okay.
Madam Chair, are we planning on meeting on Election Day?
That's what's proposed right now.
And as I recall, Madam Chair, there was a suggestion that the board might want to consider moving that, I think, as Ms. Mauer was mentioning.
Since we moved the, excuse me, the 20th to the 27th, if we slid that November 6th one week.
The 13th.
The only caution I have on that is the VACO Conference goes from the November 11th to the November 13th. So if, I mean, if everybody plans on coming back on the 12th, which I think most of the... If you go to the VACO Conference, most of the stuff ends on that Monday anyway.
Well, although there are some committees that meet...
Yeah, and the actual voting and business meeting is first thing Tuesday.
On that 13th. Okay.
Mr. Cavalier.
It's customary for the board that when we don't have an election among our members, that we do meet on Election Day. And we've done it several times in the past, so I don't think we...
I don't really see a problem.
We need to move it, because if we move it another week, then we're looking at almost a month between the October and the November meetings. That's usually a busy time of year.
Mr. Snellings.
We are, in fact, going to have a board member up for election.
Right.
Takes Bob's seat, so that's going to be one George Washington would not be represented. I wouldn't think he'd want to be here when he's running for elections. Or she, whoever it may be.
That assumes, then, that that person would be on the ballot in November. You're right. Right. So what's...
Madam Chair, if you want to stick with that date for now, and then if there's some reason to reconsider it, we could bring it back if you want to change it. Certainly, it's far enough in the year.
All right. Is that okay with the board? Okay. All right. So Marcia, could you read the dates that we've changed here, please?
The June meeting will be moved from June 5th to June 12th. June 19th meeting will be moved to June 26th. The July 5th meeting will be moved to July 10th. November 20th will be moved to November 27th. And the 12-18 meeting will be moved back to the 12-11 date. And then the 11-6 meeting will remain at that date and subject to further reconsideration.
All right.
Madam Chairman, the board has actually moved the June 5th meeting to the June 12th meeting, and the 12th actually is the primary date, according to the State Board of Elections, if a primary will be held in Virginia this year.
Right, that's correct.
Isn't it customary, the first Tuesday in June?
I just checked the State Board of Elections website. I'm not sure why the discrepancy, but they do have June 12th listed for a primary election if held this year.
Yeah, I noticed that as well. Mr. Snellings.
Is there any reason we have to meet on a Tuesday? I mean, can we push it off till a Wednesday?
The board can't meet on a non-Tuesday. The board just needs to adopt the calendar or set a special meeting.
The other option is not just the June meeting, but the July meeting. If you wanted to meet on that Thursday of that first week of July, we could do that as well. Mr. Cavalier.
Since we thought the 5th was the primary, but since it's not, why not just meet on that date and not change it?
I agree.
Okay. All right. So no 12th, it would be June 5th. All right.
And then, Madam Chair, do you want to then have that extra week between the 5th and the 26th? Or was that the reason you made that change to the 26th? Because you might want to stick with the original.
Just go back to the 19th. Okay. All right, so we'll stay with the 19th. Okay? Anything else? All right, everybody comfortable? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the calendar as amended.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes.
Tally the vote.
Tally the vote, please. Motion carries unanimously. All right. The next item is closed, a closed meeting. Mr. Snellings is going to read us into closed session.
A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, discussion and consideration of board appointments; two, consultation with legal counsel employed by the board regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel; and, three, discussion regarding the county attorney's retirement. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and A8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting.
Motion passes unanimously. We will be in closed session. Okay. We are out of closed session.
Motion to certify.
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes, please. Tally the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Let's see where we are here. All right, we're now going to go to all of our appointments. And we're going to start with the appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the BCA.
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of proposed resolution R-18-02.
Second.
Okay. Could you please cast your votes? Okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we're going to go to all the other appointments, and they can be a voice vote, correct? Rashida?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Okay, so the first one is the Bylaws Committee.
I think we skipped forward.
Oh.
We're supposed to do the citizen ones as part of three, right? So ADA Grievance Committee's up first.
Where do you see that?
So number three is all of the citizen appointments?
Okay.
And the resolution, we did the resolution first.
Okay.
Now we've got to do the citizen appointments.
Okay, so now we're going to do all the citizen appointments. And the first one is ADA Grievance Committee.
Madam Chairman, I move to reappoint all current members minus Mr. Jenkins, who has resigned from the committee.
Second.
Okay. That's going to be a voice vote. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the Advisory Board for Law Enforcement Towing. All members wish to be reappointed minus Mr. Jack Bailey and Mr. Joe Patrick. I would also like to move to approve Mr. Peter Sullivan to be appointed to replace Mr. Patrick.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is the Advisory Board for Private Trespass.
Madam Chairman, I move to reappoint all members of that committee minus Mr. Jack Bailey and Mr. Joe Patrick, who wish to not be reappointed. I would also like to add Mr. Peter Sullivan to be appointed to replace Mr. Patrick.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Agricultural PDR Committee.
Madam Chairwoman, I wish to reappoint Mr. Adams, Mr. Howe, and Mr. Rutter-Soul to be reappointed to this commission. Ms. Long has asked not to be reappointed.
All...
I apologize. Ms. Long will be reappointed at a later date, or there is a vacancy for the Garrisonville seat.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Architectural Review Board.
No action.
Board of Building Code Appeals.
Madam Chairman, I wish to appoint Mr. Gerald Snellings as a replacement for Mr. Hall and Mr. Caleb Lang as a replacement for Mr. Jett.
Yes, and I would like to note for the record, Mr. Gerald Snellings is not a relative of Mr. Supervisor Snellings.
Additionally, all other members wish to be reappointed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next committee is the Board of Social Services.
Madam Chairman, I wish to reappoint Ms. Hamilton and Reverend Donahoe to this commission.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Zoning Appeals, we've done. Thank you. Central Rappahannock Regional Library...
Excuse me. Mr. Larson's reappointment on the BCA as well.
That was passed with the resolution.
Correct.
He was included in that resolution.
Yep.
Okay. Central Rappahannock Regional Library Board of Trustees.
Madam Chairman, I wish to appoint Meg Bomke to replace Mr. Robert Thomas on that board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Community Policy and Management Team for At-Risk Youth and Families.
I wish my colleagues to make a motion, considering I am the one that is looking for appointment.
Okay, I would appoint, move that we appoint Wendy as a replacement for outgoing supervisor Sellers, and Mr. Tigner and Ms. Torii wish to be reappointed. And the private provider will be blank for now, or vacant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals.
Madam Chairman, I wish to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Hepner and Mr. Knoll for this commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Historical Commission.
Madam Chairman, it looks like we have one, two vacancies, but I would like to appoint Ms. Sue Henderson to represent the George Washington District.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Recreation Commission.
Madam Chairman, I wish to reappoint, actually, let me do this. Ms. Shelton wishes to appoint Mr. Vincent Applewhite. Ms. Bomke wishes to appoint Ms. Keisha Evans. Mr. Snellings wishes to appoint Mr. Tracy Bell. And Mr. Dudenheffer wishes to appoint Ms. Tracy Abramson. In addition to that, Ms. Bomke wishes to appoint Price Jett.
No, that would be Mr. Thomas.
Clay Oliver has resigned.
Oh, Mr. Thomas. My apologies. Wishes to appoint Mr. Price Jett.
From the George Washington District. Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's do that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next is...
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Madam Chairman, Ms. Bomke wishes to reappoint Mr. Apicella. Ms. Shelton wishes to appoint Mr. Fillmore McPherson. Mr. Snellings wishes to reappoint Mr. English. And Mr. Dudenheffer wishes to appoint Mr. Bart Randall. I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rappahannock Area Agency on Aging.
Madam Chairman, I wish to reappoint Mr. Snellings and Ms. Musselman to this commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Commission.
Madam Chairman, I wish to appoint Ms. Light and Mr. Tigner, reappoint Ms. Light and Mr. Tigner to this commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Stafford Regional Airport Authority.
Madam Chairman, I wish to reappoint Mr. Sharpenberg to the Stafford Regional Airport Authority. We do have a vacancy, as Mr. Campbell does not wish to be reappointed. That shall be appointed at a later date.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Telecommunications Commission.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Dilly, Mr. Colongian, Ms. Mead, and Mr. Reinstout all wish to be reappointed. One clarification, Mr. Reinstout will be representing the Rock Hill District. In addition to that, Mr. Snellings wishes to appoint Mr. Peter Francisco. Ms. Shelton wishes to appoint Mr. Scott Tate. And Mr. Dudenheffer will present his appointment at a later date.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next commission, committee is the Thurman Brisbane Center.
Madam Chairman, I wish to reappoint Ms. Donna Kraus to the Thurman Brisbane Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Transportation Impact Fees Board of Appeals.
Madam Chairman, I wish to move to appoint Mr. Tim Hall to fill the engineer vacancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Utilities Commission.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Bolden, Mr. Glasman, and Ms. Krytowski wish to be reappointed. Mr. Dudenheffer wishes to appoint Mr. Kent Carson to represent the Garrisonville District.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I think that completes the board and appointments. Wow, thank you for... Okay, and now we have the Board of Supervisors Standing Committees.
Madam Chair, would you like to take them one at a time? We have to at least announce, you want me to announce them all, and then... Okay. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the Board of Supervisors Committees for Bylaws. We have Mr. Dudenheffer and Ms. Mauer. For the Community and Economic Development Committee, we have Ms. Mauer, Ms. Shelton, and Mr. Snellings. For the Finance Audit and Budget, we have Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Dudenheffer, Ms. Mauer. For the Infrastructure Committee, we have Ms. Bomke, Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Dudenheffer. For the Joint Schools Working Committee, we have, as primaries, Mr. Dudenheffer, Ms. Mauer, Ms. Shelton. As alternates, we have Ms. Bomke and myself. For Legislative Committee, we have Mr. Dudenheffer and Ms. Mauer. And for the Public Safety Committee, we have Ms. Bomke, Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Snellings. Sorry.
No, no, no.
Yeah, not Meg, sorry. So for Public Safety, we have Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Snellings, and myself.
Second.
Okay, and this needs to be, no, it can be a voice vote, okay? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
What about all of these others?
We don't have to approve them. Oh, all those we do, yes. So now we are going to move on to the...
Yep.
Okay, all the agencies. Okay. Let's see, we will start with the Civilian Military Community Relations Council.
Move for Mr. Dudenheffer and Ms. Mauer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as FAMPO.
Move primaries as Ms. Bomke, Mr. Dudenheffer, Ms. Shelton. Alternates, Mr. Cavalier, Ms. Mauer, and myself.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fredericksburg Regional Alliance.
Move for Mr. Cavalier.
An alternate for is Ms. Shelton.
Ms. Shelton, correct.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. George Washington Regional Commission.
Move for Ms. Bomke as primary, with Mr. Dudenheffer. And alternates, Ms. Mauer and myself.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Government Military Affairs Council.
Move for Mr. Dudenheffer as the primary and Ms. Shelton as the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Local Finance Board, OPEB.
Move to appoint Ms. Shelton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Potomac and Rappahannock Transportation Commission.
And VRE. It's kind of confusing.
And VRE, yes.
The primary is Mr. Dudenheffer and Ms. Mauer. Alternates are Mr. Cavalier and Ms. Shelton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Potomac Watershed Roundtable.
Move to appoint, well, that's me. Somebody wants to make that motion.
Motion to approve Mr. Thomas as the primary and Ms. Bomke as the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Quan... Next, we have the Rappahannock Regional Jail Authority Board. Next, we have the Rappahannock Regional Jail Authority Board.
Move for Mr. Cavalier as the primary and Ms. Mauer as the secondary.
Second.
Or alternate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Rappahannock Regional Solid Waste Management Board.
Move to appoint Ms. Baumke and Ms. Shelton as primaries and Ms. Mauer as alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rappahannock River Basin Commission.
This is going to be me.
Yeah, motion to approve Mr. Thomas as the primary and Ms. Baumke as the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rappahannock Youth Services and Home Group Commission.
Move to appoint Mr. Snellings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Workforce Investment Board.
Move to appoint Ms. Baumke.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I have Westlake ARB on my sheet here, but it wasn't in the packet, so I believe we need to do that one.
Motion to...
Mr. Snellings? Mr. Snellings?
Yes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other commission or committee business?
Madam Chair, I believe, just for clarification, I think you may have missed the Rappahannock Agency on Aging.
Oh. So we, motion for you.
No, we did that with the citizen falling here once.
We just wanted to be sure.
Same with the library was done under the citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Good catch.
Now we are, presentations by the public. Where's what I read? Yes, it's right here. Marshall, where's the presentations by the public, what I read? What?
Just wait.
Oh, I don't know where it is. Oh, Lord, I don't know where it is. All right, I'll just wing it. It's not. I apologize, there's a written statement that we read when we are asking for citizen comment, but I will tell you, you have three minutes at the podium, and the lights will go on to indicate whether you have three minutes. And then when you are down to one minute, the yellow light will come on. When the red light is showing, then that means that your time is up. So I welcome anyone that would like to come up and speak to the board. I don't have any cards in advance, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come speak, please feel free to come to the dais right now. No one? Okay. All right, no citizen comment? And now, board comments. Mr. Thomas.
In the interest of time, I'm going to keep it brief. I just wish the new board good luck, if I happen to not be here tomorrow. If for some reason I am, I really look forward to serving with you all as well here, so good
Mr. Cavalier.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mark Dudenheffer and Cindy Shelton for their elections to our Board of Supervisors. Mark, you're a returning member, so you're not going to get hazed as much as Cindy, I guess. So, and then I would also like to congratulate Ms. Baumke and Mr. Snellings for their, on their elections to chairman and vice chairman. And last but not least, I am going to take this opportunity to say farewell to Mr. Thomas. I've had the privilege of serving with him now for six years. The whole time he's been on, we've been on together here. And early on, we found out that we're both from Ohio, so that was, that was a good thing we started off with. I did get a chance to travel to New York City with Bob one year, a few years ago, when I was chairman of the Finance Committee, and you were chairman of the board, and we went and got our second triple A bond rating, rating from Fitch that year. So we just have one more block to check on that, so we're two-thirds of the way done. And just as I said, farewells to Paul and Laura last month, I wanted to make sure that with Bob, you know, it's been an honor and privilege to serve with you, Bob, and I know we'll get to work together for many years to come, hopefully, in your new position as a member of the House of Delegates. And so I also noted at the last meeting, which was one meeting ago, last month, that there were 15 pictures on the wall of people that I had served with. Now there's 17, with hopefully, an 18th one coming in here tomorrow, right? So, again, good luck.
Mr. Dudenheff.
Thank you. I've been gone for the last six years, I served here for six years, but in my absence, I was in the Virginia House of Delegates representing the 2nd District, and it was quite an honor to do that. To sit in the state Capitol that was built by Thomas Jefferson was an awe-inspiring activity. During that time, I was also on the House of Delegates Transportation Commission, and then I served on the House Education Commission Committee for the four years I was there. And I worked with Zero to Five Education on a statewide commission, and I also worked on the future of high school education. So I've commonly told people that I think I made a better delegate because I was a supervisor, and coming back, I think I'll be a better supervisor because I was a delegate. So unfortunately, I bring all the baggage that comes with that, and I will work really hard to shed that in the future. I also want to thank Bob. He and I have had many, many conversations over the last eight to 10 months about what it's like to be in the House of Delegates. And then we had the election, and I called him and told him, everything I told you, none of that works anymore. You're on your own with this one, so, but congratulations, and you're going to really, really like it, like what you're doing, and you're going to be around some great people. So good luck to you in the future. I'm happy to be serving with so many people that I've known for a long time and friends. And Cindy, I'll keep an eye out for you, so the hazing doesn't come down too hard on you, so we'll both manage to get through that. So I'm looking forward, if you noticed, I'm serving on quite a few of the standing committees and the external committees. Transportation was always my bread and butter issue, and if you look at what I'm doing, I'm kind of pursuing the same path. And I can't wait to get started on a whole different level of government, that we actually touch the people here. And in Richmond, you just don't, you know? You might see a few protesters, but that's the extent of citizen involvement that you really have. So again, I'm really looking forward to working, and my door's always open, so thank you.
Mrs. Mauer.
So first, I want to give a hearty congratulations to Ms. Baumke and Mr. Snellings. I'm certain you will serve this board well, and I'm looking forward to your leadership. Also want to welcome Mark and Cindy to the board. Mark, you and I have known each other for more than a decade, and I'm looking forward to working with you on this board. And Cindy, over the last several weeks, I've gotten to know you quite a bit. And anybody who has committed to reading the minutes of the Planning Commission, the BZA, and the Board of Supervisors, all the way back to 2011, is going to serve our citizens well. So look forward to working with you, and thank you very much for stepping up to the plate and putting your hat in. And Mr. Thomas, our paths crossed originally when you were with Capriccio. And who knew we would be serving together back then on this board, and I'm really going to miss you. You have, you've been, as Meg said, a steady hand, and I've appreciated your leadership, and I'm certain that you're going to serve us well, just Stafford County and also the 28th District in the House of Delegates. So I wish you luck, and tomorrow, I hope you get to raise your hand. I know there's still, what, five, six more lawsuits out there, but you're going to prevail, as you always do, and you're going to be missed. And with that, that is the end.
Ms. Shelton?
Well, for my first comments, I thought I would really give a shout out to all the individuals that got me here into this position, not just the people that supported me, but also the people that vote for me. I do want to promise, though, for those that didn't vote for me, I think it's really important to know that I represent you as well. And that's going to be part of the focus that I want, is to have that equal opportunity to treat everyone fairly. For the last six months, though, as I've gone through door to door, I couldn't help but notice some continuing themes of concerns that people had. Some of those themes were congestion, which is one of the reasons why I am lucky to be on FAMPO. I'm very excited about working along with Mark, with all the experience he has with transportation issues. Other issues that people brought up are transparency. I intend to provide as much transparency I can, as well as communication. One of the things that you will find out, I think it's on the website now, is that I'm going to have a monthly roundtable that anyone can come to, and that meeting will be on Thursdays at 7:00. It's on, like I said, I think it's on the website, and it'll be at the hospital. And the intent of that is to establish open public communication, so for those that aren't on Facebook, or prefer not to be on Facebook, or any other kind of electronic notifications, I will be there unless I'm sick. And the one thing I did notice, though, when I was knocking door to door, is I didn't see Americans clamoring for more government. So my intent will be to follow along that and limit it as much as possible. And Bob, I'm sorry, I'm not going to get to work with you, maybe. And I say maybe, because I really want tomorrow to get resolved. I mean, that would just be such a blessing. And I really look forward to working with all of you guys. I've met with you as much as I can individually, and I'm very humbled by all the experience and the outpouring of love. I'm waiting for that hazing, so, all right, thank you.
Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've got to be very careful with that hazing stuff. Welcome Mr. Dudenheffer back. He and I served six years together, and it was a pleasure. He's a very knowledgeable individual, and I think he's going to bring a lot back to this board. I'd also like to welcome Ms. Shelton. I mean, she's, she's very energetic, she's digging deep into it, and that's good. She's not just taking this as two meetings a month, and I look forward to working with her as well. Just a moment to talk about Bob Thomas. I've worked with him now for six years. Of all the supervisors that I've worked with, this is the guy that is the most level-headed. I mean, he's as cool as a center seat of a cucumber. This guy does not get upset about anything, and he's got the patience of Job. I mean, he and his lovely wife are raising eight children. Think about that, folks, eight children. And just the nicest family you'd ever want to see, plus he's got a herd of goats. I'm not going to try to explain that. But in every decision he makes, he makes it, he analyzes it, he doesn't just jump to a conclusion. And believe me, Bob, you have kept this board on even keel. There's no question about it. If you ask my wife, she's going to tell you, I don't have a lot of patience. I really don't. As a matter of fact, you ask my fellow board members, I'm the one that says, let's get this meeting over, let's move. But not Bob. Bob sat here as long as it took to make the right, and helped me get into that mode as well, to sit here as long as it took to get the right decision made. So Bob, I'm going to miss you. I wish you well in Richmond, and I hope you break Speaker House record of 30 years.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And Ms. Baumke.
Yes, of course, I echo all the comments that all of my colleagues have made about Bob, and we will definitely miss you, but wish you well in Richmond. Happy, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone out there, and I want to thank the utility department in the county, as well as the Sheriff's Office and Fire and Rescue for what they've gone through over the last several weeks. I think what they did for the community in that mass shooting and how they handled that case was unbelievable, and a huge shout out to them. But also, going back to the utility staff, I know I've had three water breaks or sewer breaks in, just in my district alone, so I don't even know what's going on in the rest of the county, and they've been working out there in three-degree temperatures, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And then lastly, I want to just say thank you, welcome to the board, to Cindy and Mark, and I really look forward to working with both of you and with all of my colleagues this year. So with that, I'm looking for the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to pull item five for the purpose of an extension.
Okay, all right, item five is pulled. Anything else?
Does he have a report?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the report of the county attorney and the county administrator. My mistake. Ms. Rashida.
Madam Chairman, I have no report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLendon. Mr. Foley.
Madam Chair, we'll have full report for you at the next meeting. I did want to echo your comments to staff. This cold weather and the inclement weather that we've had has required a lot from Fire Rescue, Sheriff, Parks and Racking Community Facilities, our utility staff, as you had mentioned, landfill, and inspectors, and appraisers, all those folks out in the field. I just wanted to thank them and give them a loud shout out for the good work that they're doing, serving our citizens. I think they do a lot. I also mentioned the folks that get up at about 4:00 AM in the morning when there's weather issues, and spend a lot of time figuring out whether we should open and what we do to keep our citizens safe. So just wanted to thank all the county staff and recognize them.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, is there a motion to approve the consent minus item number five?
Second.
All right, cast your vote, please. Tally the vote. Consent passes unanimously, okay. Item number five, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Madam Chairwoman, since I wasn't on the board on December 19th, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Move for approval of the minutes of December 19th meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Tally the vote? Yeah, there you go. All right, there are five, four, and two abstentions. Thank you. Okay, we have one item of unfinished business, item number 11, utilities grant a six-month extension of subsidized pump and haul services for a discontinued property. Mr. Towery.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'll be brief. We did talk about this at the, or the board did discuss this at the December 19th meeting. I'll give a little bit of background, again, particularly for the newer members, but for everyone's benefit. In 2015, the board did move to amend the pump and haul policy to eventually discontinue the subsidies by 2022. Additionally, the board requested that the utilities department hire an AOSE, who would go out and study all of the existing grandfathered pump and haul properties that had subsidies, and determine if there are any alternative systems available. Of those 20 properties, there were five that were identified. There are two that are still in question or that we have some concern about. 48 Greenleaf Terrace and 111 Autumn Drive have both, at this time, been placed onto the unsubsidized, non-subsidized pump and haul. At the time, both property owners were given notification in May of last year that the subsidies would be discontinued in six months, which ended on November 30th. And they were given also notification about the loan policy that the board put in place to provide loans for folks who did wish to make repairs to the system. There was some question at the last board meeting about what kind of notification process the utilities department has worked to go through, not only with this particular owner, but with all owners who are in situations like this. I won't go through everything here, but in your background report, there is some discussion and some timelines of how we've attempted to reach out to this particular property owner, as well as all, excuse me, all property owners, and provide notification and answers to any questions that may have come up as a result of that. The proposed resolution does authorize the county administrator to provide a six-month extension to the subsidies for this property at 111 Autumn Drive. Staff would note that the request is inconsistent with the policy, in that the policy does not have any, does not discuss any sort of extension. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Towery?
The proposed septic system, has it been approved by the health department?
No, not at this time. The AOSE has proposed the, proposed and basically what the department decided... He believes that this system would work on this property, as was the case on all five of the properties in question.
What happens if the health department denies?
If the health department were to deny, then he would theoretically be placed back, well, in reality, be placed back onto the subsidies.
Okay, and would that be retroactive?
That would probably, there's nothing in the policy that discusses that. So at this time, I would say no, unless, of course, the board wished to do something retroactively, but there's nothing in the policy that provides for that.
Madam Chairman, considering this is incredibly personal, I would like to ask your permission to allow Mr. Morrell to provide state his case.
All right, Mr. Morrell, would you like to come to the podium, please?
How you doing, ma'am?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. All right, so I was originally notified by the utilities department that I had this coming up. At the time that I purchased my house, I was unaware of it. Everything that I had said that I was on this program until 2022, and I believe that's in the report that's on there as well. When I did get notification on it, I was getting ready to go on, I had two work trips coming up, and I had a military TDY that I had to go on. I did not want to leave all this for my wife to deal with, so I, as soon as I got back in September, I started the process, going through the utilities department, doing what I needed to do for the loan. Obviously, at this point, it's past that point, and the subsidies have ended. I spent about $1,500 over the last month, new washer and dryer, new stuff for the house to bring my utility costs down, my water use down. I've got it down to about 2,000 gallons a month, so that's huge from where I was at.
Yeah.
And really, I'm just requesting just enough time to get through this, get the health department on track, make sure everything's good to go with them, and get the installation taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Morrell?
I do. On November 17th, Mr. Morrell, when you were mailed the final notice, were you in town or on TDY?
I'm sorry, when, November?
November 17th. Were you in town or were you on TDY?
November, I was home.
You were home? Okay.
I was home in November.
And there's one more question that I had for you. What have your, what is your conversations been with the health department?
I talked to Tommy Thompson, and I asked him, and I explained my concerns with the system. I do have a low point in my yard that floods every single year for about nine months out of the year, which is roughly about 30 to 40 feet up from, or down from where they want to put the new system. So my concern is that that area is going to flood even with a new septic system. When they drain it over into that side of my yard, it will flood. It's continuously wet. I actually dug a little retention pond last year to try to collect some of that water so that I can still mow over there. And as I was digging, every shovel that I pulled up, water came up from the ground. So it's an undeveloped spring right there, and it's, like I said, about 30 feet from where they want to put the new septic tank. I talked to Tommy Thompson, he looked at some overhead drawings of it that were taken in, I think they were January or February, and he said that based on that, he can see the concern that I have because that area was still green on those overhead drawings, where everything else was brown. So he knows there's a water retention issue in that area.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, bring it back to the board.
Another question, staff.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Mr. Cavalier.
Jason, is this still on subsidized pump-and-hall right now?
No, as of December 1st, it was placed onto non-subsidized. So currently, he is not subsidized. He is still on the pump-and-hall, but it's just not subsidized.
Okay, and would this, would a vote in favor of this putting back on subsidized, is that what the request is for exactly here?
That's correct. It would place him back onto the subsidized list for a six-month period, I believe is, yes, six-month period.
And for the, for the other properties that we were looking at when we revised this policy, did we look at ability to pay as a criteria?
There is in the policy for when the subsidies are discontinued, there is foreseen the ability to have a share, well, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the term, but it's based on the percent of poverty guidelines, the federal percent of poverty guidelines. So ultimately, in 2022, when those, the remainder of the homeowners come off of the subsidies, they can apply for a certain portion of payment from the county based on the percent of poverty guidelines. We haven't explored that with the property owner at 111 at this time, simply because he's, he's expressed a desire long-term to be able to build the system and, and complete that, and was just hoping to get a temporary stopgap until he can get there.
Yeah, we're going to put him possibly back on subsidized, and he may not need the subsidy. I'm a little confused as to why would we take that action instead of just continuing as it is?
Again, it's, it's a, he's, he's making the request. He believes that in the next six months that he can get everything completed, and based on the experience we've seen with the gentleman who is in the George Washington District, six-month is a reasonable time for him to be able to get through everything and be able to make, construct the improvements needed. So ideally, this, ideally, and I think Mr. Morrell's aware of this too, ideally, this discussion and some of his concerns would have been addressed last May, June, but as he explained, he was out of the country some, and I think he didn't feel like he had the adequate time to be able to get through everything and get to the point where he had that constructed system in place.
Yeah, my biggest issue here is just going back to the subsidized part, and I don't see the linkage there that makes this a necessity. I don't, I, I mean, we're going to need some sort of documentation, I think, to make that happen.
To put him back onto the subsidies? I'm sorry, I'm, maybe I'm not, so the resolution would give him six more months of the subsidized pump-and-hall? Not, it would not be permanent?
I understand, but, but until you prove that you're deserving of a subsidy, I don't understand how you give a subsidy.
Again, yes.
That's my question. It's rhetorical, but...
I understand. You're saying if he submitted documentation showing that perhaps he met the percent of poverty guidelines, something of that nature. He has not, at this time, we haven't, again, we haven't really looked, looked into that further. We could certainly take a closer look at that and have him submit that information, if that's what the board wishes to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
For the benefit of my two new colleagues, if I get something wrong, please correct me, but we had a big pot of everybody who was on subsidized. And when we passed the policy, we looked at each property, and if staff felt with some basic engineering that they could use an alternate system, they're the ones that we said, you're going to come off of by November 30th, whatever the date was. And then everybody else, eventually, by 2022, will have to figure out something else as well. So this person, it seems to me there's at least a reasonable probability, maybe it's 50/50, that maybe the alternate system that we thought would work might not. If that system turns out to not work, maybe the health department looks further into it, would that person have been left on subsidies till the 2022 without an alternate system available?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's kind of, that's what's different for me. So, okay, thanks, and I hope that helps.
And when, when he came in in September and asked, asked that question, he did voice some concerns at that point about the low point in the yard, and what we recommended at that time was to have another opinion from perhaps another AOSE who could, could show us that, hey, there's a conflicting opinion here, and that didn't happen, but he's, I think what, you know, in talking with Mr. Morrell a little before the meeting, I think he would love to see the system work, and I think we all would. That would be in the long-term benefit of not only him and the property, but the county. And I think really the question here is whether or not, you know, is there a stopgap measure that the board is willing to put in place to help him get to that point?
Mr. Towery, I have a couple of questions. One on the timeline, on the second item, it says June 16th through the 18th, Mr. Morrell is notified by the existing owner of changes to the pump-and-hall program and advised to contact the utilities department. How would he have become notified? How do we know that the existing owner told him about that?
It was an addendum provided from the real estate agent of that prior owner, showing that, that was disclosed essentially in the contract, that there were ongoing changes. In that addendum, it does reference that, that the board has some ongoing changes regarding pump-and-hall. It does talk about that most of the properties would be placed, would allow, would be allowed to have subsidies likely till 2022, and then it says basically, "For more information, call the utilities department."
Okay. Yeah, I've got a couple other questions. And then, if I remember correctly from our last board meeting, his water usage was up around 8,000 to 10,000.
Yes.
So he's brought that down to 2,000, because that was one of my concerns. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I understand. He was having his tank pumped about once a week, and he just reported last month it was once for the month. So that's about 20, 75% reduction. And, and he's aware, I think he said he invested in a high-efficiency washing machine, and...
So our subsidized amount, if we chose to subsidize it, is going to go down a lot?
Likely.
Likely. So originally, that budget amount was like $4,500, so there's a possibility it might go down by a third.
Yes, I would venture to say that'd be reasonable.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, Ms. Mauer.
And I'll just, I'll wait until the motion is made, and then I'll clarify the question that you had.
Oh, okay, all right. Anyone else?
Well, I was waiting until questions of staff were done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Towery. Okay, is there a motion?
All righty. So, Madam Chairman, this one is difficult for me. I am very much one of a pull yourself up by your bootstraps, and this was a program that, quite frankly, was, was one that I was supportive of while I was running for election. However, I think there are some extenuating circumstances, so I am going to make a motion to approve a proposed resolution, R-18-10.
Okay, is there a discussion?
Madam Chairman, if you would allow me the opportunity, there's a couple of reasons why I look at this as a change in circumstances. Number one, while we were changing the policy, this property was going through a transfer. And although the property owner was notified via addendum, the actual addendum, if you look at it, which is included in our packet, it says, "Effective 6/16/2015, all subsidized pump-and-hall customers will be subsidized for another seven years. Changes in property ownership will transfer the seven years of subsidized fees. More information, please call the Stafford County Department of Utilities." And so, you know, yes, the homeowner should have, should have called the Department of Utilities, and he did contact the Department of Health, but, but the addendum in and of itself says that he's going to continue these subsidized fees. It doesn't make, it doesn't make any mention of the fact that if they find an active drain field, that, that he would have to transfer, and then he would be brought off of the subsidy. In addition to that, so he's going through this property transfer. It's not like, you know, he's been on subsidized pump-and-hall for 10, 20, or 10, 15 years, I think this program has been going. And during that time, because he is a member of the military, he was on TDY a couple of times, and so he lost quite a bit of time there. And then finally, he is attempting, he's making an attempt to reduce his water usage. The first really high bill was he had a leaky toilet, and he fixed that. Then he was looking at, you know, everybody's taking camp showers now in his house, and he's got three teenagers, God bless you. And, and so it's been kind of this learning process for him, but, but the thing that really concerns me the most is we don't have an approved, health department-approved septic system. And so if the health department does not approve this septic system, then he would have remained on the subsidy, and that concerns me. Whereas if we do not approve this extension, and he comes off of the subsidy, then, then he would lose that period of time before the health department makes their determination. And so with that, I'm going to vote in favor of this, and, and I, and I hope I can get the support of my colleagues.
Thank you. I think Mr. Dudenheffer seconded.
Yeah, okay, then.
Mr. Cavalier.
My only heartburn with this one is that now that we have the financial criteria attached to this subsidized pump-and-hall, that we're not following that procedure in this case. I actually lived on the, on the adjacent property of that, where I lived there a long time ago, 30-some years ago, and the septic system that I had there right next door did fail after I moved. But I know the issue out there, but it's, you know, I'm just having a hard time using taxpayer money to fund this whenever we do have a process in place that would perhaps not allow that to happen. So that, that's my issue.
Mr. Snellings?
I agree, Mr. Cavalier, to a certain extent, but I do believe there are extenuating circumstances here, and I believe the gentleman has made a concerted effort to try to get everything done. He's reduced his water usage, and, you know, being in the military and TDY, and I know how difficult that, that is. I was in court about a year ago as a witness, and this guy got up in front of the judge, and I think he was reckless driving or something, and the judge said, "What you got to say for yourself?" He said, "Well, I've gone," no, it was DUI, he said, "I've gone to school," and he said, "I've done this, I've done that, I've done this." And the judge was really impressed with that because the guy's helping himself, and he kind of reduced the sentence. And I think we've got the same thing here, you know, extenuating circumstances, individuals trying to help themselves, so I'm going to vote, vote in favor of the subsidy.
Mr. Thomas?
I think, you know, obviously, there was a delay in getting started. I think we all recognize that. I think you've acknowledged that, which is good, and not tried to kind of slight that. And I think, you know, staff has been tremendous with this. This was one of those programs that was created, and a lot of taxpayer dollars was going out, and really, it's, you know, it affects the rest of the utility payers. So I think we have a good plan. I think the policy was well-thought-through. I just don't think we had this scenario in there, and I'm getting a pretty, pretty good feeling from staff that they think this will be resolved after the six months, so I'm leaning support as well.
Ms. Mauer?
Just, just one point of clarification, and this probably goes to Mr. Towery. Does the, the financial requirement, that doesn't kick in until 2022, is that correct?
Hmm.
After they, they go off the subsidized, then they can get the financial waiver?
I believe that's correct. Mike, are you, you wrote, I'm going to call Mike up here for a minute, make sure that's...
In other words, we're not asking for financial statements for people who are currently on subsidized?
We are not asking for grandfathered customers. However, if somebody came now and their septic system had failed, and they wanted to get on the system, they would be pro-rated.
Okay.
Pro-rated, and I think that's what Mr. Cavalier was saying. If, if he's now off subsidies, wouldn't he be treated as somebody who was? So, but I agree that it's a chicken-and-the-egg kind of thing. We hired an AOSE to determine if there's a possible alternative system, then we give six months for them to hire an engineer, work with the health department, you know, that he was out of town due to this military, and so that's where, as you guys have expressed, the extenuating circumstances.
Okay.
Okay, while Mr. Towery's there, so the statement that Ms. Mauer read that was a part of the addendum for when he purchased the home, what that said to me was that it was inferred that they, he would be on subsidized pump-and-hall regardless till 2022. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that the, it looks like from that statement that the, the property owner at the time was trying to let them know that there were changes, but, but yes, it does say in there that there was, you know, that there were seven years of subsidies likely left. So I think it could be inferred.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, with that, I'd just like to say, I feel like, based on that statement that was attached to the addendum, and the fact that he's made a significant reduction in his water, and the fact that he was on military leave, I'm, I'm going to support this. I think he's going to move in the right direction, and given that we don't know what the health department's going to say, so I feel that it's the right thing to do at this point in time. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, does the board have any other business? Okay, does the board have any other business? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.